Commercial multifamily or something like.
Yeah, there's six, there's six here.
The reconciliation of both side by side is where that's, that's what I'm going to push for at least. I don't know what you're dealing with before you.
Yeah.
This ain't the, this ain't no Obamacare. I could read it until after.
I think we're time to get thirty now.
Of course they have.
Trial, trial and find.
Why would he got involved with it? Not the businessman I thought he was.
Ready? Pardon me? Okay. These are my slides.
Thank you.
Appreciate everybody coming tonight. We're having a special presentation of the City of Easely UDO and Rico Gianni. He's the Senior Planning Associate with MRB Group. And he's going to go over the presentation. We'll open up for questions and answers afterwards. I think the first question will be from the.
He'll take care of that.
He'll take care of that, okay. And we've, if, there won't be a vote tonight, so.
Thank you Chairman. Like the Chairman said, you know, this is a public meeting to discuss kind of the first, the first delivery, the first version of this UDO, which is a combination of the existing zoning ordinance and land development regulations. We, I'll give my presentation. The PC and the BZA are, the members of this, the board may interrupt me at any time, so feel free to interrupt me if you guys have any questions or you said, you know, I have a question pertinent to something that you're going over. Feel free to interrupt me and we can engage it. And then after my presentation, we'll continue our kind of question and comment period. And at the end, you know, time permitting, we'll, we'll, we'll open it up in ten or fifteen minutes for the public to ask some, you know, general questions or give public comment. And this, this meeting is being recorded for public record purposes. So again, thank you for everyone in attendance. You guys are taking out of your time to come here. This is a very important project, even though it's a very technical document. I was kind of joking with Mario, it's like, almost like a budget hearing, right? Like if, you don't really, you know, if you're not a financial expert, those budget hearings may not make sense if you're not familiar with land development and zoning. This may be totally absent. So I just appreciate everyone taking the opportunity to come here, get educated by it and learn what the, what the City of Easely is doing. So prior to the work of the, prior to the start of this project, we were hired by the City of Easely to produce a zoning audit. And this is available on the city's website. And basically what the zoning audit composed of is myself going through the zoning ordinances as well, the zoning ordinance as well as the land development regulations of the City of Easely and using my professional background, experiences in other development environments that are scalable and appropriate to Easely, you know, made recommendations. In addition to like code language, a lot of the recommendations were tailored around organization, cleaning up, imagery, process. And just so a reader or an administrator or developer can pick up this document and say, okay, I need a subdivision, that goes to the planning commission and these are what I have to, you know, submit for a complete application, things like that. So as you could, this table, this multicolored table, really complex, not really focusing on the details of that, but this table is in the zoning audit and it basically showed how I would, I was proposing and showing how both of these documents would merge together and kind of on the left side, put them into these twelve categories. Next slide. So main, kind of highlighting the main findings of the audit. Kind of the example that I alluded to, the review procedures were kind of spread throughout the zoning ordinance and spread also, some of it was in the land development regulations that were pertinent to, you know, those, those regulations. And so really if you had a, a project that crossed a couple of boundaries, like let's say you were, you know, like, let's just give the example of like a new, like commercial development with a multi-building site and you're saying, okay, well, I need to divide the land and create some roads and infrastructure. Oh wait, and then also I've got an architectural review components, but I have to now, I have to go back to the zoning ordinance and try to figure out and decipher that and like the timing of it and all that good stuff. So that's, that's another example of how we merged those or created an entire article that captured all the development review procedures of the city as related to these documents. Another big point is definitions. They were kind of intermixed between sections large, and we see this often that, you know, at the beginning of like a sign section, they'll say, oh, this isn't a patch sign, this is a wall sign, this, and then it'll go into the sign regulations and then it'll go into another section where it's, well, we took all those definitions and just put them in one home so that you have one appendix where you say, okay, this is where all our definitions lie. And that helps to clarify redundancy and maybe potential conflict because if you have a certain term that may be defined in different areas or definitely if like you define it differently in the zoning ordinance or land development regulations, that could be definitely problematic. The permitted, the permitted uses were paired with each zoning district. So if you were trying to say, okay, where, where can I open up a, you know, a, a small daycare or a grocery store or something like that, you really had to hunt the document to try to find exactly where that was permitted. So what we've created is a permitted use table, basically a table, and we'll get that later into the presentation, but we've created basically a one-stop shop to say, these are all the uses that are defined and this is where all the districts that they're permitted in. And copy and paste, same with dimensional standard, which is your setback, how, you know, how far your building is from your property lines, your density requirements, all that kind of stuff. Anything that numerically you can sort of think of as it relates to a property, we put that in the dimensional standards table. And then lastly, but maybe most importantly, the most new, the most significant change that you'll see in this document is the tree preservation standard. That's the, that's the shiniest, newest thing in the document. And, and we did that, and of course, there was a lot of, a lot of motivation to do that from council, from staff, from the public. So that's, 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 that's the main newish, new thing of the, as far as new regulations. Just highlighting again, I've, I've touched on these before, so I'm not going to get into them, you know, consolidate, consolidated document for easy, easy review and administration, creating some of those more cumbersome documents into easy to read tables, consolidation of the development review procedures. And then also fine tune some elements like open space and green space requirements to, this is where we've enhanced some language to really get a little bit more of the intent of the original ordinance to get a little more requirements out of. And then enhance some language around development impacts, like traffic impact analysis. And the city had a lot of good language surrounding that again, but again, we just fine tuned it and enhanced it. And the area coordination committee, this is something that we're re-establishing. There was mention of this in the old sub, the current subdivision regulations, but something that may, may have fell off the wayside, but this is basically going to be an internal, we could consider a site plan review committee or an area review committee that takes, you know, the city planner, the police chief, the fire chief, public works director, utilities, all in one roof at an internal review procedure at the beginning of the process, so nothing's overlooked. So becoming more and more common these days. Revive the architectural review board and then, like I mentioned, you know, create that whole new tree protection and preservation chapter. And so the process thus far, as you can see, it's just been, just generally a five-phase project. We're, we're at this last phase where we have produced a draft, but now we're bringing it to the city for fine tuning and adoption, just to make sure again, like throughout the project, we're reinforcing, these are the goals of the project, you know, with staff and, and in various presentations to the city. And then this is yet another check on our, is this was, you know, this is a contract, we're making sure that we're accomplishing the goals of the city and that this document is, you know, you know, accepted as designed. And then here you have, you know, you guys are probably familiar, you got, many of you took this survey, so I appreciate those who took this survey. That's just an example of our communication to the public. And then this slide is just to highlight, yeah, table of contents of the new UDO. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this because it's very, it's just wordy, but just to, to highlight those twelve new articles that were referenced in that zoning audit table. This is those twelve articles that's being proposed for the new UDO that again captures everything from the zoning ordinance and land development regulations into one document. And then with the five appendices, table of permitted uses, the new consolidation, zoning map stays the same, overlay map stays the same, City of Easely preferred plant list may, may have some, may have some revisions just to make sure it's up, up to standard and then of course the definition. All right. So now that that's like my introduction slides basically, and I appreciate your patience, now we'll get into just the basic composition, composition of these sections. Like I said before, if commissioners or board members have any questions that are pertinent to this section, feel, feel free to say, hey, I got a question real quick. I'll be happy to answer or explain more. So luckily, we're starting off with the really easy stuff. A lot of this stuff is laid out in state law, especially the first article, authority, jurisdiction and transitional provisions. This is basically, the City of Easely has the right to adopt a zoning ordinance. It controls everything in its jurisdiction and, you know, this is how, yeah, just basically how this, this, this document is legally allowed to be enforced. Article two, administrative and development review bodies. This is basically different from the development review procedures. This is detailing the composition, membership, rules of procedure, appointment, compensation, there is none, but you know, things like that, that are regarding like the, the various boards that are, and committees that are in the city. So it'll say things like, you know, the ARB is five members, they, you know, live in the City of Easely, that the BZA reviews variances and special exceptions, that's their powers and duties, things like that. Next slide. Now pause for any questions on that? Go to the. There you go.
Yeah. No, here it is.
Ah, there it is. So article three, nonconformities, this is a section that, you know, as you, as you develop a new set of regulations, there's going to be some existing stuff that was legally permitted and may have, you know, in existent for many years. Those are, you know, the term grandfathered in, this is basically the grandfathering section, the nonconformities. So this section controls those uses that are just accepted and have been in existence. Now, certain areas that we've fine tuned and tweaked and a little, and suggested is those, these percentages that you see in red. And to summarize what all this means before I kind of explain it is that when you have a existing grandfathered in use and someone reoccupies it and remodels it, you can set various thresholds and say, hey, you know, you've kind of, you've invest, I mean, it's a, it's a project, you know, you've invested a lot of money in it, why not kind of, let's, let's get a little bit of community benefit, maybe where we can install some landscaping or maybe if it's, it's a forty-year-old parking lot that's barren and is, and it's, you know, generates a lot of heat, you know, if, if we, if we meet one of these thresholds, we can potentially get some public or some community benefit, you know, kind of reduce the urbanity to highland, we can get some landscaping back on the site and create a nicer development, right? That's kind of how we move the envelope a little bit forward with each development. Not saying that we're, you know, not to be business unfriendly and like make projects unfeasible, but just generally trying to require just a little bit of investment on top of the big investment of to redevelop it. So that's kind of what these, these numbers mean, you know, nonperforming structures, if you exceed one hundred and fifty percent of its appraised value as it relates on the, the county tax assessor, you know, you would, you would be, you know, required to say, okay, you got to invest like five percent of those dollars to install some trees and that sort of stuff and bring in, bring the site up to compliance as best as possible. So. Next slide.
Quick question.
Yes.
Okay, like the hundred and fifty percent of appraised value. Pardon me? Oh, okay, the hundred and fifty percent of the appraised value, what if all the changes and everything were in, inside the property? Does that still count?
Yeah, like if that, just generally it's like, if, when they submit to the permit office and they say, hey, I want to do this potential project, like Mario, in this hypothetical scenario, Mario would be like, okay, give me the estimated project cost as you would submit for a building permit. And then so that would be, that would be the cost and it would be the entire, the entirety of the property.
Okay.
Yeah. All right. Next article, this is development review procedures, as I've mentioned, as used as an example a couple of times during the beginning of the presentation. This is where we outline all the applications that there are. Well, one part is outlining all the application and their respective processes that they're, that the City of Easely, you know, these documents involve. And this is, you know, starting at the very basic, like zoning permits, you know, single site, single site building or, you know, a new, one new residential home on a single site, or if someone wants to build a shed in their backyard or something like that, that Mario would just does a very, you know, basic check of setbacks. Then you've got, you know, your major and minor subdivisions and the difference, for those who don't know, the difference between major and minor is based on the amount of lots created, so. And now those would go through the planning commission who explain that process, special like, special exception and variances to the BZA, explaining the state mandated criteria that is paired with each of those, each of those applications, rezonings and tax amendments, you know, those are two-step process as you, as you guys know, to go from PC to council and then appeals, you know, appeals to administrative decisions or appeals to different procedures, applicable procedures that go to the BZA. And so I know this is kind of jumbled up and I should have used my pointer, but this flow chart on the right kind of best encapsulates that. As you can see, it's just, you know, it's pre-application, this is really a, if someone was coming in for a big subdivision, like the most comprehensive one, you have a pre-app, you sit down with the area coordination committee, they submit a general sketch to react, for the city to react to, and then you kind of go through it. And then you, you know, once staff and different internals have determined that it meets most of all of the requirements, then, you know, then it should be in a state that it goes to the planning commission. But the purpose of this is just really enforce that, you know, there is a, there's a time and a place when these documents need to be inserted in the process, like, okay, at, at, you know, bubble five, we're going to need like stamped engineered construction drawings because you know that, and things like that to, to make what's presented very clear. Next slide, please. Oh, and one thing I, I missed off on art, that last slide is this, is, is the development review procedures will also highlight, you know, which, which applications need a public hearing, which are just a public notice, which, which, which applications are posted notice, which applications are mailed notice to adjacent property owners. So it's very specific. All right, so this is zoning districts and maps. We didn't change any like language or setbacks around any of the zoning districts. We didn't create new zoning districts, we didn't demonstratively change them. But like I mentioned, the, the, really the, the new stuff is the reorganization of existing information into these, into these two tables. So, and I was trying to think of a good analogy on my way up here and the best one that I could think of is imagine you're putting together a cookbook and like you've got your, the cookbook that you've had from a long time ago, or maybe an old, old cookbook is got recipes A through Z and it's just like, just list them A through Z, it doesn't separate them from chicken to beef to, you know, baking to breakfast to dinner or anything, it's just A to Z. And what we're doing here is creating a cookbook that's, now we're doing a baking section, we're doing a poultry section, we're doing a, you know, that's for us, that's for us. So we're, we're, we're trying to categor, categorize these different sections or, and reorganize them so they're just easy to read, so. So, but I just wanted to say, you know, no change to zoning district, just the major change here is just the creation of those two tables. And we'll get into those right now.
You didn't say the FRD.
Yes, oh. And that, that did come from the zoning audit and the flex, the FRD or the flexible review district is something that we suggested to eliminate, that's, you know, up to the, up to the city council and board to, you know, go through with that. But essentially it's just, you know, the way we see it is this could just be a conventional residential district essentially, or a maybe a slight revision to an existing residential to kind of capture what the FRD was intended to, so that, that may be one suggested change to the zoning district, but. Next slide. All right, so going into the dimensional standards table where you can think like numerical setbacks, height, lot size, lot width, that sort of stuff. If you're, if you can just imagine like a sur, your survey of your house and your building on it, like that's, if we're looking at it from like a two, almost a two-dimensional view. So again, we just took every, every height requirement, setback requirement, minimum lot, density requirement, things like that, we just combined it all in one table. We didn't change numbers or anything like that. And also we, and this might have been intentional or unintentional, but we did find some like the City of Easely code has a different lot size for each different, whether, like the lot size can change, whether it's a residential use or a, like an institutional use. And so that's what that highlight cell shows. And maybe in that zoning district, you don't want any non-residential uses, but that's, that's what that highlight cell means, that there's no minimum lot size there. Additionally, we, the standards in the zoning, because there, there were some conditional standards as they pertain to like accessory uses or sheds or garages or things like that, and we, we captured that in this table as well, where your accessory is your building placement. Again, your placement of your accessory building, like your shed relates to setbacks, so you know, it's referenced in the table that mentions all the setbacks requirements in this, in the city. All right. Kind of, I guess table two, the infamous table, the new table that we created, this permitted use table, this is fairly common in planning and zoning practice to shift to a permitted use table. And essentially you just list all the uses that you define, and this is not all of them, I couldn't fit the entire table, probably get off to the floor, but just list all the uses that are defined in the city on the left side. And then in the corresponding cell, it would be blank, if it's blank, not permitted. If it's P, it's permitted as a bright. If it's C, it's conditional, so there may be some conditional uses, say, say a drive-through, you'd go down, see the drive-through and say, oh, you need at least six parking, you know, you need at least something to do or you need to do something special because you're a drive, you're proposing a drive-through in the city. And then lastly, SE, which stands for special exception. So you can think of that as case by case review by the board of zoning units. And then also I, we took this opportunity to suggest some new uses and suggest some new definitions as, as, you know, we advance and we go, like if, you know, as the years go on, new uses come out and, you know, cities need to consider those, like a, something that may not be relative to Easely, but a lot, like something that's kind of relevant is like data centers, right? In the last like ten years, data centers like are, already started popping up everywhere and there was a huge demand on infrastructure. And so there was a huge, like nationwide push to like rewrite, you know, like data centers. And now like in South Carolina, now there's solar farms popping up everywhere. So that's, that's where the suggestions come where, we're not, you know, like suggesting that RV parks come into Easely, we're just saying, you know, it's stop regular, you know, regulating it, calling it out and regulating it is better than, you know, kind of getting blindsided by a requirement. And so this, same thing on land use provisions, this is a slide to just provide an example of those conditions that may be, and I know this may be hard to read, but this is just, it's for bars and nightclubs and car wash and automatic self-service. And so like for example, like you can see here, like a bar and nightclub, a bar may consider the accessory to a primary use such as a hotel or a restaurant, but when it is, if that bar exceeds, you know, fifty percent, then it's no longer a restaurant, it's a bar, right? So you want, you want to make that distinction to say like, okay, you know, you have to be a food service first, then you can have, you know, then you can have a bar. And then additionally, like you want, you know, you don't want to deny a bar in a hotel just because that zoning district doesn't allow a bar, because a bar in a hotel makes sense, right? So that's kind of the, the double side sort of that.
In that situation of the hotels in a lower intensity zone, you can say use bars.
Right, yeah, like if, if a hotel, that's a great example, where if a hotel would be allowed in a lower intensity zone than a bar, let's say in the core commercial bars up here, like the hotel could still have a bar in there because it's not the primary use, they're not, you know, it's not. Yeah. Yeah, next slide. All right, this is probably the most complicated section. And article seven essentially captures ninety percent of the subdivision rate or the land development regulations. And this is really how, I mean, how streets, intersections, sidewalks, street trees, what I would consider and what a lot of people would, would consider the public realm, the place between the buildings. This is the regulations that, that, that capture all of that. And so in this diagram, I tried to do my best and tried to kind of detail and sort of pick apart this conceptual site plan that I found on the internet about how, when Mario and I, we're, we're looking at these site plans and we're looking at these subdivision applications and things like that, and we're pairing them with the land development regulations in one hand, this is sort of the breakdown that we have to go through. I mean, it goes from truly, like from A to Z in this, where we're looking at, you know, oh, you're proposing an alley, well, there's requirements for an alley and there's, you know, there's widths and, you know, access requirements and things like that. Oh, I see it's opening up on a street, you're opening up at that curve, well, it's got to be a certain distance from the nearest intersection so we don't create traffic conflicts and things like that. And then also for, let's say, oh, you want some, you know, you know, rear access, I mean, these could be townhomes or something like that. Well, the City of Easely requires that townhomes now be rear access, for example, or rear access. So, you know, you're showing your private driveway, that's to standard, you know, that's showing the rear access of that. And then additionally, like in the case of a planned development, they're required to be mixed use. And so we would review like this kind of like a community nook, an amenity center, maybe a neighborhood business, and we would just make sure that that also, you know, meets the requirements of not only the planned development as a state law, but also just the, the City of Easely requirements as a place to plan developments. And so, and the, the new language here, a lot, a lot of the existing language, kind of like I've been repeating, it's just been reorganized and reformat in this section, but the new language is around street trees, plant, you know, planting and spacing requirements and kind of, and using, because the City of Easely had some good existing language about placement, but we just wanted another, you know, again, enhancing like that there's some repetition in street tree plantings as well as open space requirements. And again, like those open and green space requirements that were found in the individual zoning districts, we have taken them and kind of reorganized them in this table. And like Mario and I were discussing before this presentation and, and as this is a first pass at the draft, there was some, you know, some continuous work that we have to do to make sure that all that is captured, but that's another new area where you'll see in the document, when you get to the open space section, you'll not only see, actually, I'm getting ahead of myself, just I'll put a pin on. you'll not only see, actually, I'm getting ahead of myself, just I'll put a pin on that thought for just one moment. But in the land, lastly, on this land development standards, a land development section, is this is where will be the home where the city of easily will outline what the requirements for a planned development are, what the requirements for what I would, what I've termed alternative development patterns, whether it be conservation subdivisions, you know, things like that, cottage court developments potentially, you know, certain things that are maybe outside of the general norm of just general subdivision. So, next slide. Okay, so this is what I wanted to put a pin in, because I forgot that I had this slide. And again, this is a lot of, this is a lot of small words, and this will be on the website.
Yeah, correct.
Okay, so this will be on the website. So essentially, what we've got is two tables. One, we've got when a development is proposed in a zoning district, when a development is proposed in a zoning district, how big it is, you know, and then what the percentage of that property has to be dedicated open space. And then additionally, you're like, okay, Rico, what is, what do you, what are you proposing? The city of easily defined open space, are stormwater ponds open space? Or is the grassy area behind my fence open space? No. So we're also proposing defining these, these open space amenities and saying, okay, if you're, to accomplish these percentages, you have to call out and define this is a playground. This is a, oh, if you want, and you can make a stormwater pond an amenity with a pavilion, with benches, with a trail around it. I've required in another Venus Palace, it can be done. And so that's, that's, you know, not taking away from the importance of engineering and stormwater, but we can enhance and turn those into something. So, yeah, that's, that's sort of one of the, another, one of the other ma- major tweak, I said, major enhancement. It's not, I wouldn't categorize it as new per se, but, yeah, next slide. Alright, and this is, so, Tom, speaking of new, this is the, this is the new, new, new sort of section. We took the existing vehicle use area regulations or VUA regulations. And I actually, I actually applaud this, I actually, this is a section that I really liked of the existing ordinance. It's basically those areas, parking lots, drive-through lanes, things like that, to be buffered and screened and things like that. So took that, enhanced, you know, reorganized them, cleaned them up. And then also, we, we're proposing these three types of buffers and calling, defining the three types of buffers that are going to be used in easily. The first one, or the least intense, a visual buffer, and you can just, it's just opaque. It's just to block the nuisance of sight. So you can say, yeah, just the nuisance of sight. And then going down, visual and acoustic, so you can think of this is also sight, and then maybe there'd be a nuisance of sound for this use. So it's a little bit wider, a little bit thicker composition. And then for the big, you know, the big, more intense uses, you know, you can think of like engine repair or things like that. Lots of car traffic, lots of noises, maybe a potential industrial park or something like that. You could say, okay, this is a visual acoustic and separation buffer. Because we need, we have not only sights and smells and noises, so those uses are most intense and they have the most, they have the most impact on adjacent residents. So we, we're proposing these three types of buffers. Of course, the benefit of defining buffers is then you can say, when a X use is next to a existing residential use, it needs a visual and acoustic buffer, or it needs just a visual buffer, or it needs a visual acoustic and separation buffer. And last thing about the composition, as you can see, you know, you've got width and then the amount of overstory, understory, and shrubs that are needed per 100 linear feet. So we're requiring a composition within that buffer. And then also, one of the first things Mario told, asked me or told me about it is like the, like, also designing some, like, spacing requirements, like, because you can plant trees in a line and that doesn't really, you may, in some cases, meet the numerical, like, the, yeah, intention of the ordinance, but you're not really achieving the block. So we've added language where the, you know, the zoning administrator and the planning commission say like, okay, well, you need to like implement some triangle spacing and reorient, reorient your understory trees with your canopy trees. So it really, it blocks at all levels, so you're blocking high, medium, and then with your shrubs, low. So in addition, in addition of the allowance of using where, because some areas are very topographically constrained and may not have the physical area needed, but this will also allow the planning commission and zoning administrator to say, okay, well, you don't have 20 feet for a buffer, but we can maybe do 15 feet with a berm, a fence, and a heavy planting to like really get, you know, what we need. So, but, yeah. And then, I think, I believe, okay, yes, next, next slide. So, yes, this is another brand new, this is brand new. And this is tree coverage and mitigation. So when, so there's two aspects of this. One aspect is there's just a general tree coverage requirement for the city of easily that's proposing. So like, for example, if you're in a one-family residential district, you know, one overstory tree per 4,000 square feet of lot size. So just, that is kind of the overall capturing of the trees that are needed. Now, can you, can you potentially, you know, achieve this credit with the planting of street trees and the preservation of trees?
Yes.
And that's what this table is for. So when, when a develop, when a development is coming to easily, more than just a single home on a single site, right? Something that, you know, is causing a, you know, subdivision or, you know, non-resident or a commercial business. You know, before they, you know, definitely before their trees are in the ground, they're submitting a tree survey, they're submitting like an itemized list of the trees, their species, their diameter at breast height or DTH, and then also showing which ones are going to be removed. And so based on that, based on the type of tree, like type A being the grandest tree, you can think of this as maybe like 50, you know, 50 inch or, you know, 60 inch live oak. Like, there's different replacement percentages, and there's some examples. And this kind of gets a little mathematical, so I won't get too in the weeds, you know, there will be a, you can look at my examples maybe online, but essentially, you're taking the existing tree and you're giving two options. You say, this tree is 50 inches. If you want to replace this tree with new plantings, you have to achieve 50% of 50 inches. So you have to plant basically 25 inches of these types of overstory trees on your site to, to replace that tree. The other cost is if it's not feasible due to site constraints or whatever, and it can't be accomplished by other credits, like planting of street trees or other, or they will, they'll pay. It's just, it will be a payment to the city into the city's tree fund that they can be earmarked for plantings on public parks or new, you know, that sort of thing. It's very common in South Carolina to, you know, do things like that, fee in lieu of, essentially.
I'm looking at, I'll go back to the market for many years. I'm not a landscape architect. Somebody says, we have a landscape architect design.
Oh, absolutely.
In New York.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So the, and that's a very good point, like, these intense calculations in the tree survey. Like, the onus is always on the developer. Going back to the development review procedures where you're, you're saying, at this stage, you need a sketch plan. Okay, now it's getting a more advanced, okay, at this stage, you need a site plan. In those stages, it calls out, okay, now that's the time to produce your tree survey. So in, and it is, the onus is on the developer, you know, it has to be, you know, produced. And in those tree regulations as well, if you have some, if you have some grand oaks, there is some arborist, there may be some arborist requirements to determine, okay, this tree is in failing health and that sort of stuff. Yeah, so there is, there is, that's a long way of saying, there is reference to, tree surveys need to be submitted by, you know, LA landscape architects or other certified arborists, as well as reference to arborists in general as it pertains to the removal of these very, like, these significant trees as defined by this new section.
So pine trees would basically be?
Yeah, pine, pine trees, with the exception of longleaf pines and things like that, pine trees are usually, from what I've seen, exempted from tree removal prob, and especially like water oaks as well, because water oaks are just problematic. And then, like Bradford pears, best way of tree, from Bradford pears is angle high, you know? So, so a lot of, a lot of communities have just exempted certain trees. But of course, like, you can, you can say, yeah, we exempt pine trees, except pine trees that are maybe over 30 inches or something like that, and, you know, you could, you could do that, but, right? Yeah. The next section, parking requirements. So a lot, lot of stuff intact. We want, but we want to give a little bit more flexibility in terms of reducing parking because oftentimes, just to give you a quick history lesson, since the 1970s, basically, communities have been copying these, like, parking standards from, you know, you know, oh, you know, shopping centers need one space per 300 square feet. And that's just been replicated to communities all, you know, forever, you know, since they were adopted. And so, we added some language that if you didn't want, like, if you're just proposing, you know, let's say a medium-sized restaurant, and the code said you needed 40 spaces, you don't, you know, it's an existing lot and you just don't have that, you don't want to just turn away the business just because they don't have 40 spaces, when it can be achieved by sharing the neighbor's lot or various things. So we gave, and one example is, you know, they could, a developer could potentially, or a business owner could say, hey, you know, I've got a parking analysis that, you know, shows that I need 12. And then up to the determination of the planning administrator, you know, seeing if that's accurate. And then lastly, really as a last resort, using these, these standards from what I would say the 70s, these Institute of Traffic Engineers standards, we can still use those standards, you know, there's reference to them. So as a last resort, if, you know, there's not the desire to do a parking study or there's, there's no shared parking around and it's still, you know, we can still use those standards to say, okay, yeah, you need, per these standards, need the national, national standards, you need 20 spaces. Took, you know, took the, you know, existing parking loading standards, enhanced and revised some design and circulation standards. What this means is for those parking lots, those newly developed parking lots or redeveloped parking lots, we want some language that we require and also incentivize cross-access as well as pedestrian circulation. Where there's space, where there's like a parking lot that may be proposed with maybe like more than 20 spaces or more than 30 spaces, then that big parking lot would be required to have, let's say, like a center sidewalk that goes along the path. And you've probably seen them at Harris Teeters or, you know, different grocery stores in different parts of the state. But just essentially, one, getting more landscaping, and two, is just, you know, safety and all that good stuff. And just to kind of mention the pedestrian connection and pathways. And then additionally, like the tree mitigation, similar to the tree mitigation, especially for those core commercial, especially for the core commercial downtown areas, you know, fee in lieu of parking. So this could also be a way that the city can kind of fund maybe potentially a public parking garage in the future or something like of the sort. So it would essentially be, you know, I'm opening up a business, there's clearly not enough parking on site, there's not any close parking spaces. Instead of maybe going to the BZA and asking for a variance when there's not really an identifiable hardship, you can, you know, you could just pay a fee in lieu of, and then that is an option for a developer. So just, you know, kind of give it in parking, if you ever want to, if you ever want to do a little more research on it, there's a book called The High Cost of Free Parking, it's a very good resource, so.
The parking requirement, but if someone like Walmart comes in, where they don't use all their parking, they say, you know, we have a corner we want to develop, is that something you look at, something like that?
Yeah, like an out parcel or something like that? Yeah, absolutely, like, in those, in those, like, multi-phase or multi-building sites, developments, definitely.
Because when you designed, it was extra.
Yeah, it was.
It was designed for the opening day.
That's right, yeah, my, my famous, I, not my, no, I didn't come up with this, but like, the thing I say about Walmarts is they design their parking lots for two days, grand openings on Black Fridays. And the rest of the year, it's like 40% occupied or less. So that's kind of, that's the extreme example that's kind of behind all of this. We overpark, and we overpark our sites a lot. So just giving a couple of options to try to reduce that. And that's something that we heard also from the steering committee as well, that there were some, been some city projects that have been really well liked in the downtown where it's kind of, these buildings are oriented around the shop, the parking area. And, yeah, just, you know, you don't, you don't need, you know, most often than not, you don't need all that parking. Alright, signs, this is the same, yeah, exactly the same standards, pretty much the same format. I mean, it's just, we organized it, there's no language change. You know, we just, we put it in a format that can be easily revised or changed or something. If we wanted, if we wanted to change elimination standards or the size of pole-mounted signs or free, or things like that. So it's in a, it's in a format that we can, we can change, you know, certain numbers or things like that if we wanted to. But largely, this is exact, this is exactly the same. Next, yeah, getting easier, now we're on that downhill slope. Violations and enforcement, existing language, this is all very well-vetted and used, I mean, the state, this is all very, kind of like the first chapter, very standard language, like, essentially, like, you know, if you violate this ordinance, you're going to be given a citation and, you know, all that kind of stuff. So, so, yeah, so that's, it's all relatively standard, using existing language, stuff that's common in every single jurisdiction. Next slide. And then, kind of, and then just a kind of fun thing, I didn't do this, I cannot take credit because I'm not a creative. I asked one of my very capable colleagues to put these together. And so we kind of got three options for the cover page, kind of the fun part of this technical exercise, kind of choosing a pretty picture. So we haven't, obviously, we haven't decided on it, but just, you know, we've got these three. Yeah, and of course, we can go back to the drawing board if these are just absolutely impulsive, so. So, and then, I guess the last, or next slide? Okay, so this is, I end with a little bit of humor. This comic by Ian Lockwood, he's a engineer with a tool design group. There's too much traffic for Billy to walk to school, so we will drive him. So it's kind of, traffic is inducing traffic. So to say that in another way, one of my professors in college said, you know, solving traffic congestion with another lane and like solving obesity with another notch in your belt, like, it's ju, you're inducing, you know, you're just like, oh, oh, just going to put another belt, and that's not really my stuff anymore. And then, you know, the dreamy towns that you see in posters, cards on these hollow, they'd be largely legal to do parking mandates because, you know, you need all these onsite parking spaces. So like, to open a barrio spot, you need 15 parking spaces, and you need a restaurant, you need 30. And, you know, so then you've got all these separated buildings and large parking lots, and then you don't really have a dreamy downtown like that, so. So this is a little bit of humor. And then, so, right now, I guess we'll just open it to questions and comments from the commissioners, board members?
I have a question on this. So you referenced a few times, actually quite a lot of times, that.
So you referenced a few times, actually quite a lot of times, that this was a consolidation of a lot of things, but, and that there are whole new sections here, well, the section about the trees and things, and, you know, differing language. How difficult would it be to, I think I touched on this, about, uh, when there's language that we're saying is consolidated, getting it side by side with what we currently have? That way, we can see a running list of, like, if wording has changed, is it in essence the same thing? Have we rewritten anything? Are we directly quoting from existing documents? Because I feel like it's, it's incredibly difficult with a draft, even knowing where sections are, being able to, like, fully account for what we currently have, and how it's changing, is it, are these minor changes, are these major changes, are there major inserts, and where are they? How, how difficult would it be for us to get a fully annotated document like that, even, even online?
So if I'm, um, just to clarify, like, the way I imagine it would be, the existing easily zoning ordinance, and the existing easily land development regulations, like I could go through those documents and like highlight the sections, and maybe put a comment on the side that says, this is now section seven point nine of the UDO, or?
I'm, I'm a glutton for, uh, for more information than less, so, I mean, in, in an ideal world, I have, I have two columns, what's written, and then the reference section that we have, as close to it as possible, that I can see them side by side.
And then also from the other, on the other side as well.
Correct.
From what the, the new UDO.
Yeah, it, yeah, even if we're kind of working them in parallel, like, it, for, for example, sections that are directly quoted, those are not really of concern, but areas that are slightly reworded, but in essence, the same thing, very minor changes, highlighted in yellow, and reference next door to, you know, whatever we existing have. Things that were completely omitted, but a whole section of those, and then anything that was added, and, you know, with, those are obvious, but still highlighting them to know that, hey, what we're reading here is indeed different, because it wasn't in previous documents previously than that. So I, I, I think it would be helpful to have, it's gonna be a huge document, I'd imagine, with as many pages as we have, but I feel like it's the only way to really fully see side by side, because we could be as experts as we want, but comparing two separate documents of that length, it's like comparing two different versions of the same book. It's really difficult to do that.
No, absolutely, that, that point is well received, and I can definitely, um, not gonna say it's easy, but I, I can get my staff to see how, how that would go about, so, yeah.
Well, you do, see what section, what, you give each of the sections, you try to put that off.
Well, I mean, there are other ways to do it too, because a, a, a paper document might be incredibly difficult, but if, if there was a way to say, in an online version, be able to reference it, like, you could almost highlight.
Right.
Like in a PDF document or something, where you could move your cursor over it and actually see what the existing wording is.
That's right.
That would be acceptable too, yeah. It might, might be a lot easier on the, on the trees that we're trying to protect.
That's right, yeah.
I see one of the biggest changes is, um, the elimination of the zoning that we used to have in there as part of about ten pages, or maybe more than that, maybe twenty pages, that it consolidated to a table.
Right.
For me, thinking about it, at, at first I looked at it, I was, I was kinda confused, because then you look at it, and you go, okay, he's put all that information, twenty pages to one, one page. So that, for me, as an engineer looking at to do a design, it makes no sense to do it that way.
Right, yeah, and, and this, the, and, and the workability of a document like this is fantastic, but there, it also has to be the way to like, hey, if we're gonna move it forward, we gotta make sure we double check that we're not, hey, what did we miss? Did we miss something huge here that could have just, you know, we could have easily seen if they had been side by side?
Right, what I desperately, desperately, and Mario and I were talking about this a little bit, of a few case examples, desperately don't wanna do, is to remove something from the existing code that was working really well, right? Like that's ultimately, I think, at the point, we don't want to do that.
Because I, I, I don't wanna get to a place where, like, we think we got it, we, we didn't give it enough look over, and then we end up having to go back and change it multiple times after we've already pushed it through, when we could have just done the due diligence ahead of time and saved ourselves a lot of trouble.
Yeah, that's one of the things we, I wanna say, that we're not pushing it through, we are, we are going to take our time reviewing this, um, and have this, the amount of needs we need to have. One of the other things that, looking at this is compliance, um, just that you know, it, sometimes people do things that don't let us know. And the building department and the planning department, while we're in the same room, we don't know what they're looking at. So we're gonna have more detailed information that we can say, okay, has the sign been permitted? Is the, everything been, everything been permitted for this use? So we are, we are, we're gonna be more cohesive. So that's one of the things I like about it too, if it's a, it's a compliance certification, instead of a, a certificate to occupy. So that's one of the things I like about it also.
Yeah, yeah, like that, and just to expand upon that point, so the public, we're talking about like in that, like at the zoning permit that I mentioned, so like, that, one of the zoning permit is a zoning compliance, so if a new business wanted to open up, or someone wanted to do something, propose anything, they would first reach out to Mario for a zoning compliance, and so that would get rid, keep everyone on the same page. But yeah, I, I do like that, I, I, it is possible, I don't know how long it will take, I'll have to troubleshoot to make, to just try to see, so, but I'm obviously definitely not opposed to it, but.
Or, or in, as an alternative, a, a way that we can easily compare the two.
Right.
Even if it's not a fully fleshed out document, although that's what I would ideally love, like, you know, a lengthy thing that would even do a strike through, highlight it in red, you know, just, because if, if I have trouble comparing the two, the public will as well. And I want them to be able to read it and say, hey, I see this here, hey, I have confidence in this thing going forward, that they say its consolidation is exactly that, and they can see it, and they can check it, and they're like, we're good.
Okay, um, yeah, I'll definitely look into that, the best way, the best way and clearest way to do that. But yeah, it'll take me some time, I'm, the, my one, if you're sensing a little hesitancy in my voice, it's like, can I get this done for the next meeting? You know, so, that's, that's why I'm being a little hesitant, so I'll work, I'll try to work on that.
Feel like a teacher asking to do better on the rough draft, like, I wanna see a different.
So this is so much material to cover, is it something that you could get part of it done by our next meeting, or we could go ahead and go through that part of it? And then, instead of trying to do the whole book at one time, because we're not gonna cover this whole book at one, one meeting, there's no way.
Yeah, absolutely not.
So if you could do it in sections, that, I think, I would be fine with that, I don't know about the rest of the board. If they can get started at front, and we just, as you go along, give it to us, and we can cover that.
Yeah, and that, that's, that might be a good idea, to try to break it up a little bit, and for my benefit as well, so.
When, when do we have the next scheduled meeting, do you know? Do we have one on the books?
We could, we could probably do it next, the next Tuesday after the seventeenth meeting. Don't wanna have regular scheduled meetings at the same time, because we have a regular scheduled meeting coming up on the seventeenth, and so I'll want to wait until the eighteenth. We'll tell you when the meeting, uh, we give you guys back to back, which is kind of, we can do it the week after, so we can do it the eighteenth or the, uh, twenty fifth.
Well, I, I guess my, my question would be, you know, to kind of get a sense on how much time you would need for, you know?
Yeah, give them about thirty days.
Yeah.
Well, thirty days to do a whole thing, but sometime, and I can see what I could do to help them out too, I got nothing else to do. One, one of the questions I think you're gonna be asked, I'm gonna be asked is, if I have an existing site, and I wanna add to that existing site, what is going to happen to the densities that I was building at the first time? So I had fifty acres I built, um, I could build that density of ten units per acre, and now the density goes less. Can I still build that, that ten from the previous development?
Yeah, uh, that, I guess that's a, that's also like a vested rights question. Like if that, if that plan was approved under the old code, that, what the state law finds as a site, a site-specific plan, that becomes vested, and the vested rights period is essentially two years default. So like when you get a site plan approved, or a prelimi, preliminary plat subdivision approved, and you, let's say you get it approved at ten, ten u, uh, ten units per acre, and you're still within that two-year period, uh, you, yeah, you can develop it, but if it's, but yeah, that's a que, I guess it's a question of vesting.
But I think what Mario's saying is, what if you added additional acreage to that? It, it's, it's under the new regulations then.
That's, yeah, that's a good question, yes, it would be under the, because I, the, if the new portion of the existing development would be under the new regulations, just like when we deal with what I call like legacy PUDs, not what I call, what people, planners call legacy PUDs, or legacy planned unit developments, developments that have been adopted and rezoned ten years ago for a huge development that may have not came to fruition, but the market changed, and they wanna do an amendment to that, that PUD, that planned development, they would, they would, if they come and petition the city, it's like, oh, well, you're not, I'm sorry, we've changed our code since the eighties, or what, or whatnot, you know, now you're coming under, because, you know, now you're coming under our code, now we're gonna review it again under fresh eyes, so, yeah, yeah. And I said eighties, because that's definitely their vested, they would be not vested anymore.
I have another follow-up question, if, if at any point we feel like there's something that wasn't addressed to some degree, I, I wouldn't think there'd be very many oversights, but things that we believe may have been either mistaken, or like misprint, or whatever the reason may be, what's the best way to present that information in a, in a consistent way, so that you have it, that it can be considered, how, how's the best way to approach that?
It's a great question.
Well, what, what I'd like to do is, is create a spreadsheet, and if you could create a spreadsheet saying, hey, section two point one point three, I've seen this area here, this area here, well, misprint or whatever it is, send that to me, and I'll get it off to the.
So, so put it in an Excel sheet, reference the section, reference whatever changes we're talking about.
That way, if I get enough people doing this, then I can put it all in one spreadsheet, and then I'll, I'll take the sections and sort it by section, that way I can see if there's any duplication.
Yeah, and that will, I think further help with like, kind of, that annotated version, right?
Right.
Whenever it's like, okay, well, we have this annotated version, then we got these suggested changes, and with these two documents, we've now produced a final draft, and it's like, then that, that record will begin, so I think there'll be another benefit to that. Yeah, so good, good question.
Reason to get rid of the FRD.
I think, you know, if someone wants a special zoning district to kind of develop outside of the zoning ordinance, I think that's what the planned development is for, um, I think, that's my, yeah, that's.
So you're gonna call it a planned development, not a planned, I mean, a lot of times a planned development looks at, um, mixed use.
Right, yeah.
So you just use the pa, plan development for just residential?
Well, not in so force of that, if someone wants to, like, if someone wants to develop a residential subdivision, and they don't want that mixed-use component, and they, because they don't want the planned development, it's like, oh yeah, I'll do the flexible review district, so then I can kind of create my own, you know, I can, it's, yeah, it's almost like, it's like a residential-only planned development. And so, my view of that is, okay, well, if you want special, special regulate, you know, if you want special treatment, then you're, then be a PUD, or be a conventional zoning district, don't be a flexible review district. So that's, that's my opinion, so that's my, uh, that would be, that's, that's my rationale behind the elimination of the flexible review districts.
So can PD or PUD be all residential?
Some communities.
That's a question I'm gonna get.
Yeah, some communities have approved them that way, because they've like said, oh, boat storage is mixed use, which I don't agree with that. But, but like, no, I mean, the, for me, the intent of the planned development is you have to, you have residential and non-residential, and you kind of have, you have a mixture of uses, not just a mixtures of residential densities and storage amenities, so, yeah.
Because the, the FRD was basically, you used to say, I wanna, I'm gonna get more density, but I'll give you this open space, or I'll give you like this park here, or I'll, I'll do something better for you.
That's right.
And that's what they typically wanted to do with FRD.
Right, and, and that, and in that scenario, kind of going back to that alternate, alternative review, uh, development patterns, and the sub, the, the, that Article Seven, is like, we could maybe capture that intent in like a conservation subdivision. If someone wanted to appeal to planning commission in the town for more density, in exchange for a public benefit, um, that, that can be captured in that alternative. Like, instead of an FRD, maybe just, like, I guess maybe my, my, is just the terminology, because it's just called something else. It could be called, you know, there's, you know, it could be a conservation subdivision, if you're trading density for public amenities. If you want a mixture of use, you know, that's, that's a planned development. If you're just residential, if you're just residential, um, you could probably, you should probably just fit in the already-defined conventional like districts of these, like, that's just my, that's my opinion, yeah. You don't have to eliminate it, right?
Oh, you're right.
Yeah, yeah. Any additional questions from commissioners? Sure, okay, just, yeah, so I think, yeah, we'll, you know, uh, we'll open it up for general public comment, uh, you know, try to keep it reserved to two minutes per person, uh, but yeah, we'll open it up to general public comment or questions.
Just, just come up to the microphone, uh, name and address, well, just name, um, speak clearly, and address. Just address, yeah, Nico.
Two oh three Glen Laurel Drive, Easley, two nine six four two. Um, I've read quite a bit of this, and I see some things in your verbiage, uh, that, listen, for instance, you say things like, do a tree survey, but you don't say who needs, do the tree survey. Don't necessarily understand from the flow chart, which is not here, um, when the tree survey is going to be approved or reviewed for a subdivision, or for a commercial development, single-family development, or whatever else might be coming along. Um, so I think you need to say who the professionals are, we're going to do these surveys, who's gonna do the traffic impact studies. They should be named in here, at least by their titles or what they are. My brother-in-law is a helicopter pilot, he can fly over anything, he can take a picture, he could say he's a tree surveyor. Okay, that doesn't really give you the quality that you want, and I don't really like my brother-in-law anyway. Um, I'm confused about zoning permits. The first thing listed on your zoning permit requirement is a permit to remove the tree. Your definition, in the definition section, for a tree, is a three-inch diameter or ten-foot-high tree. Now, I've got, uh, three apple trees in the backyard, they're not producing apples, I want to be able to cut them down and put pear trees in. Each of those trees is in excess of three inches in diameter and more than ten feet tall. I'd like to have it spelled out in here, how much that tree removal permit is going to cost for my backyard. Mario, how many people are you gonna have to have looking in people's backyards to find out the size of the trees? Is Eddie gonna have somebody picking up the trees, measuring the diameter of what I put on the side of the road? What is the fine for not getting a tree removal permit for my four-inch diameter apple trees that are not bearing apples? So I guess you're gonna have more people on staff. Another thing that I noticed, um, is that you're requiring bonds for completion of subdivisions. After having ridden through two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine in Greenville County, and I can't remember the exact number of subdivisions that failed then, but you do not recover money on bonds. You must have a letter of credit.
We have, we have stopped doing that.
Uh, yes, but it's in this.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have that.
It's in this, and you didn't mention that, uh, and that leaves the city vulnerable to, um, default. And again, you use it in many different, uh, sections, you, um, allow or are calling for bonding of sidewalks, that again, should not be done.
Should we say that's assured?
I don't think that you should accept a subdivision under a bonded or assured.
Since I'm in a work area.
It hasn't been completed, if it's not there. Um, you are requiring. It hasn't been completed if it's not there. Um, you are requiring open space. Good thing. I like it. Um, but you're saying what it's supposed to have, what it's to be used for, but you don't say to whom the dedication is made. If those dedications are made to the city, are we as the citizens of the city responsible for the, of those open spaces? We should not be. And that should be clearly stated in here. Again, you talk about your alleys. I bring you a wealth of experience in how not to have alleys. Alleys should never be dedicated to the city for maintenance. Alleys are nothing but fights among next-door neighbors. If you're gonna have them, dedicate them to an HOA, have those HOA documents to protect the people there, but not the city. We don't want to be involved in an argument between where somebody's putting his trash can in the alley. Also, I think if you check with Eddie's equipment, they should not be sending their heavy equipment down alleys to pick up the trash cans. They break them back up. You also with alleys have to look at the water runoff, your stormwater runoff. All of those things have to be accomplished in a very small space. And somebody inevitably wants to change his oil in the middle of the alley on the day that the trash trucks are coming through. How do I know? Because I got the calls. I, I like alleys. That's a fine thing, but they've got to be out of the city's hand. They should not be a city issue on that. Um, a PUD, if you go back into the period that I was exposed to up until two thousand and nine, a PUD is a large development. It is multi-use. You're not looking at a 10 or 28 development. You're looking at a very large development. So as I recall, the development of the flexible review district was to scale something down to give something on the order of a conservation, you used the term conservation subdivision. Um, we used cluster subdivision in Greenville. Where you would cluster the homes more closely, you had the same density as what you started out with. And you cluster the homes closer together so you have more open space. That's conservation district. Um, I, I, I don't want to confuse the PUDs and, um, flexible districts. To make a PUD or any kind of PUD I've ever heard of, you really have to have mixed use. You mentioned the mixed use. And it shouldn't just be a boat storage facility. But that involves having a much larger initial piece of property to be able to, to have those others. I've got, who coodles more? You said two minutes. I'm over that thoroughly.
Thank you. And Pat, that is good information. And if someone else wants to talk, we can bring it back up. But does someone else want to speak?
I appreciate the specific feedback.
And having, having a forum for, you know, that kind of feedback to be presented at this point too would probably be helpful.
Justin Alexander, um, I, I disagree with about the, kind of the tree removal issue. Um, I hope you would consider an exemption for small residential lots. I mean, it just doesn't seem efficient to be policing or requiring permitting for that. Um, I've got a number of, either I found a, a few type bows. I'll, I'll put those in the spreadsheet that you suggested. I've got a number of questions. But my most significant is on the, uh.
Board of Zoning, I mean, sorry, on the planning commission.
Architectural Review Board.
I believe the Board of Zoning Appeals.
None of those are written to restrict residency to city residents. Um, I don't understand why the city of Beasley appointing and putting the zoning and rulemaking of the city of Beasley properties.
To people outside of the city of Beasley, potentially outside of the camp. That's
Good evening. I'm Dennis Gallagher, one twenty-one Springdale Lane, Easley, two nine six four two. And, uh, one of the things you alluded to was, uh, when you were talking about trees and parking lots, how many parking spaces and whatnot. If it couldn't be done, you alluded to the part about paying a fee in place of that. Um, I've seen it in the past in places that I lived that, uh, it doesn't work well because some people, developers, are able to pay a large fee to pretty much get what they want. And, uh, the smaller ones, they have to go by the rules and plant the trees or mark the spaces and that sort of thing. Um, the other area that I have some vagueness about is reinforcement of those, how it, who it's going to be enforced by and, and how it's going to be enforced. And you alluded to it in one of your, your slides, but it kind of went over the top of my head, uh, the real, the real answer to that question. And thank you very much for having the meeting tonight. And I wish there was a whole lot more people here. Thank you.
Other questions?
Chris Clark. I live here in Easley. Um, in these plans, are there any setbacks for water?
Like for wetlands or?
No, for like ECU type of water, any kind of water.
Water buildings?
Mm-hmm. Are there any, is there any, anything there specifically for that?
So in the land, in the land development standards, we, there, there is a section that's dedicated for like utilities and easements that they've located in an easement and the specifications for that easement and that, no buildings or paved structures, you know, or, you know, that sort of stuff. So.
Typically, if they run the roadway, there is no, there's no easement because the easement is the roadway. If they run off the roadway, they have their own easements.
Okay.
Which is probably 10 feet each side of the center line of the, of the.
Is how much?
Probably 10 feet each side of the center line of the water line. It's 15 feet to each side of the sewer line. I mean, 50. Um, I know that, and, but old flats have different setbacks, easements. Now, what can be done in there is predicated on what ECU will allow them to do in there. Typically, you can see fences, but if the fence is put in easement combined has the, the right to go in there and pull that out and not put it back out. Typically, they do. So just trying to figure what you, what you're trying to say.
Those things, I mean, I read it in less than 24 hours and.
I've got a real job to, um.
But, um, so there's gotta be. No vote tonight, is that correct?
We do not plan to vote on this tonight. We plan to, um, either table it or, um, what's the, what are we gonna use?
Just defer.
Defer, defer. And then my last, my last quick thing is, and I know you mentioned this earlier, but.
You just try to kind of throw away everything in the kitchen sink.
In there, you know, just to, but RVs and campgrounds in City of Easley? I mean, are you gonna put this at Smithville Country Club?
That's, that's.
Where is it gonna go? Or is it gonna go over here next month in the middle of, of, of?
You put that in there just so we be aware that maybe we just say no RVs.
Because I'm looking at the.
City right now.
And there are five hundred thousand dollar plus homes in the middle of one of the most poorest parts of our city. And there's also a. Barrage of black, it's like, um, containers that are called apartments that can't give them anything right now. And they were built on a counter where we tore down some trees, um, cedar trees, I think was what everybody mentioned about that. And, and yet, my question would be during the hurricane, when we had a cedar tree coming across South Fifth Street and there were no cones in place, for those who were driving in the middle of the night, would those dead trees have been in the middle? I just need for wherever we replace things that they.
And I'm a plant, you said.
Water oaks, pine trees, that kind of stuff. I mean, if they're gonna fall over in a high wind, then, you know, they don't need to be here. So that's all. Thank you.
Brings up a question. Um, kind of to what she said. If you've got a tree that's dying, okay, um, and you get an arborist to make that declaration, so you, you take it down, are you required to plant something in place?
So to, and some, and this might have been missed, and I'll double check just to make sure this is in there. But it is, the tree regulations do exempt single-family residents. They do have some exempt, they have some exemption, exemptions so that, like Mario's not going in people's backyards to make sure, you know, that sort of stuff. So like, there is, there is some, there is some exemptions for that, like, just essentially, like I, in various jurisdictions where I've served as a city planner, it essentially comes across your desk as, here's a picture of the tree, my, my re-rationals, it's threatening my property and it's a bit diseased. And then the zoning administrator up ahead basically, okay, for this single existing parcel, not for subdivision, it would be just administratively reviewed and determined. Um, and usually those are just approved. In some cases, like a case that I had, I went to, I went to a site because there was a, a, a church that was proposing to remove a, like, a 70 or 80-inch live oak. And I was like, oh, does this tree really have to be removed? So I had to go out there and look at it. Sure, sure enough, it was, yeah. So anyway, so that, I just wanted to say that there is the exemption for, uh, like, single-family. And then to your arborist question, like, that is really gonna be for large developments or, um, certain trees that are deemed like significant, like those maybe 50-inch oaks that are like, okay, I have to submit a tree permit. Okay, because it's a 50-inch oak, you have to submit an arborist report as well, because it's a tree significant.
Just so that y'all know, we, we do, we don't have an arborist on staff, but we have an arborist look at our trees, especially our, in front of City Hall. Uh, so they're looking at those trees to see what they are. We realize one of them needs to be taken down, so we've got a price for them, a couple of different people to take it down. We need to look at ourselves also as we do this. And, you know, we can't sell him to do it and then us not look at it too. So we have to be very careful on how we write a lot of these regulations. So we have to maintain them also.
I'm jumping in front of some people. But one of the problems I ran into when we had open space is that homeowners buy their lot, back up to the open space because they don't want anybody behind them. Good thing. And then I received written requests to cut me on trees in open space because believed we're going into their swimming pools. So there has to be, a lot of them didn't ask.
They didn't, exactly.
You know, we have the ones who asked, but a lot of them didn't ask. So there has to be something there.
It would go to the homeowners association. The city's not gonna take that at all. I mean, you know, you, you, you know, we, we, we know, we know better. Um, well, hopefully my successor will know better also. But, but we, we have to look at that. But we also we have to take that open space and not necessarily green space. And so there's a, there's a delineation between the two. And there's a definite, uh, we want green space that's gonna be maintained by HOA, that's can be used by the HOA. The open space will allow, um, walking trails through there, but that also has to be maintained by the HOA. I don't want to get too deeply into the HOA's problems.
Nowhere in here does it demand that you're sitting here a copy of the HOA documents. And I don't think.
We do that, yeah. It doesn't mean we do.
But you need to have that and you need to review that.
I believe, I believe it is in there, but I will double check.
I did not see it.
Yeah. Cause also in the, I believe in like that chat Article seven, I think it's the subsection as general standards, there is a paragraph that says, you know, at the beginning of the process, if things are gonna be dedicated to the city, that that be known at the beginning. Um, and I'm paraphrasing obviously, but I'll, I will double check that.
Appreciate it. Does anyone else have anything? Or Pat can continue on. There you go. Come
I'm Donna Rainey.
First off.
Could you put page numbers on the document?
Yes. I didn't realize they weren't on there, so.
I think the purpose is to make us wait for it.
Oh, thanks. I'm sorry. I thought I put them on.
Um, I just have brief notes, but if we need to look it up, I'm sure Pete can do it. In five dot seven dot one, you're talking about the surface ratio. And I think the example was the five thousand square feet on a 20,000 square foot lot. Um, it's not exactly clear is. Are you taking into consideration whether it's a one-story home, two-story home?
So that, very good question. Um, also, like, so the, the city also has that. So the one-story, two-story question is, um, the city has what's called a floor air, floor, uh, FAR requirements, a floor area ratio. And it's basically, if you're limiting a floor area ratio, it's a math thing and a bad explaining math. Um, so it's like, uh, you can, you know, if there, if you could put a one-story building on half the lot, you can put a two-story building on a quarter of the lot. And that's kind of like the FAR ratio. So in terms, I think if I'm understanding your question, like, your, your question was impervious coverage.
Yeah.
I mean, shouldn't it just be the footprint of the, the property irregardless of the square footage?
Well, also that the impervious coverage is everything, not only covered by roots, but pervious, like, certain.
Way said once.
Right.
Yeah.
And so, um, you know, that's, that's, that's the intent of that. People are, they can't understand. Five, seven, one, that, that in the dimensional standards, stay long.
If, if I can, I, I think the question, okay.
Go ahead.
I think, because we talked about this last time, I, I think the question is, just clarifying that like the second story, if we're looking at a perfectly squared building, the second story, that would not add to the square footage, right?
No, no. Right. It would just be if the two-story building met the high requirement, no, like, yeah, the square footage relates to the two-dimensional. The footprint. Yeah.
Okay. Well, take a look at that and see if it.
Yeah.
We just use FAR, Florida. Uh, here it is.
Okay, and.
Six four one, we're talking about.
Campground.
How is campground considered agricultural use? Is there a zoning for that?
Oh, I mean, that's just, it just kind of, it.
You just threw it in there?
Agricultural, rural, they kind of get, these terms get tossed around a lot. So, uh, yeah.
But that's something we can decide as a city council member is to say, do we want a campground?
Yeah. Just pay the, or just pay like, oh, you know, it's special exception and the minimum lot size is 20 acres. And so then by that way, it's like, that's.
Basically, he's put everything that, that could possibly, I, I believe, I looked at it also the same way. I said, well, let's discuss it because, because I'm not the, I'm not gonna be the, the all-in-one though. So I, I read and say, okay, do we want to do a planned, do we want to do the, um, mobile home subdivision? Do we want this? We just say, no, we don't. And that's, that, that ultimately it's the city council and planning commissioners' call on what needs to be done there.
Six four one. See, city ordinance, ninety dot thirty-five farm animals are not allowed in the city. And I think on the list, some of those were farm animals.
I'll double check that. I did.
No, no, no. Do we want to, do we want to do it? Don't want to do it. So that's a question that we can.
Right.
It's also under six four one three.
Certain, yeah, certain communities are like, okay, well, we want chicken poops, but they can only be like 120 square feet and no roosters and, you know, that sort of stuff.
Well, that has been addressed in the past because a lot of people do both chickens, probably more so.
Now, with the, the price of eggs, but, you know, it's, it's just was a hard nut. Okay. Um, six four two, does a playground require for an adult home here? Wouldn't that put a hardship on the person trying to open it?
Well, it's just, you know, in, in my experience, also like, uh, try not to tell you a long story, but, um, when I was in Mississippi, the state got sued by the Justice Department because their mental health was bad, to put it there simply. And so they, they basically statewide allowed for unrelated adults to be considered a family. That's Supreme Court. And so what we saw in the community was a lot of, just like, it's like a family occupied home, but it was, you know, um, rehabilitated, you know, mentally. home, but it was, you know, rehabilitated, you know, mentally, you know, that sort of stuff. Those people that need a place to live, of course, need to be rehabilitated, but they're getting inserted in these single family areas. So that's where that comes from, that, you know, these are, they shouldn't just be put in a box and just stuck in a home and left. Like, these people are living there, they need some amenities. If they're gonna, and especially if the organization is gonna use that property in a non-completely residential nature, like, they should have some amenities, right?
It's a playground.
Yeah, yeah, playground, it could be a playground, play a, it could be sports equipment, you know, I think.
Okay.
So you can maybe look at just a, or some sort of maybe amenity or something, but that's where that comes from.
Okay. In 642, I think that's I, number eight, why are tourist homes excluded for home occupation? That was the section.
That might have been some carryover from the existing language, so I'm not quite sure.
And, and a tourist home, from the definition I look at, you know, they rent rooms, does Airbnb.
Rebound.
You could rent a room or you could hit, you know, rent a house. So.
I may have to consolidate tourist homes into like.
Okay.
Short term rentals, because, that's a good point, because I see a lot of communities go like, oh, we have bed, breakfasts and short term rentals and guest houses. It's like, what's the difference?
We'll have to look at short term rentals as a, as a different ordinance, so we can reference that, say, look at, reference that, which is one of the things we have to list to review and do.
Okay.
ADU is another thing we have to look at.
Okay. And this same section, 642, number one, and number four seem to contradict. Number two is owned by the applicant or owned by others. Number three, is this limited to just rooms or homes? And then number six, it's too tight of a window for a, for a one hour drive and a person living a maximum of 40 miles out. If you go to Seneca and you hit Clemson just right, it's gonna take you an hour to get to. So that might need to be looked at again.
Yeah, and that, that'd be really hard to enforce, if you were caught in traffic, right? And be like, oh, you know, you lost your bed and breakfast for an hour and 10, and Mario's waiting with a stopwatch. But it's just a given thing.
I mean, it could be worded as a reasonable amount of time, and it's subjected to what's reasonable. And I don't know if this was written correctly, and I misunderstood it, but it's talking about the service stations putting the pumps in the rear? That doesn't make sense.
It's an aesthetic choice. Yeah. Yeah, it's becoming common, like, like, for, like, drive-throughs or pickup windows and things, just to orient that stuff to the rear.
Basically, you have the, you have the building closer in, so you eliminate the front.
The building's closer to the road.
Close to the road.
Okay.
And then the, the, everything else is in the back.
And also, it helps to break corporations out of their cookie cutter models when they just push, they buy people in and they just stick it right there. And they're like, hey, this is the same circle K or whatever.
But.
It also could open up to be a dangerous.
Situation when you're, this woman's pumping gas at night.
Well, it would still be in the back, but the back becomes the front.
Just keep it up the road, trying to forsake it too.
Right.
So, so the front is not, there's no accessibility. The accessibility is still.
Like the front door would, the front door of the building would still be oriented towards the pump.
Oh, towards the back?
Yeah, because, and so, yeah, so like the building would be, you know, fronted to the road, but like oriented to the pumps, because people, you know, park with the pump and they would go into the stores.
I'm also seeing more of that than.
Okay. All right, that makes sense.
Yeah.
Okay, and another question about a convenience store having 500 square feet of fresh produce?
Another, another way of controlling.
I mean, that's the same requirement as a grocery store.
No, it's more.
She said, so it's a, it's a way of controlling chains that seem to proliferate very highly. So that's, it's a way, it's a very specific operational condition that, yeah, so it's.
Yeah, again, I'm seeing more of that also. You know, just not going to other areas that are different, different, like I think Oahu does that. But I'm thinking that even QT is not gonna look at something like that, when you go in, you have a 500 square feet on it all about.
Well, yeah, I mean, these stores do sell food.
Right.
But it seems like the ordinance is saying, if you're gonna sell food, you're gonna have to dedicate 500 square feet to fresh produce.
Something you brought on.
Weird. Okay. And then the 644, religious assembly, what about assemblies in private homes?
That, the term religious assembly is just for church. It's like more, I guess politically correct to say it, because it's, you know, a lot of places just say churches, but you have many different types of religious assembly, so. But like, what, when you mention assembly, like at home, like.
There's sometimes on Sunday morning, like 10 cars outside of someone's house, so.
I think that's just.
And it's like every Sunday?
Well, that's maybe something that happens. Yeah, and that might be on between like a.
We have to be careful today.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, because you, like, often, like, places of religious assembly are just conditionally allowed in every single zoning district because of this.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Right now, right now.
Right, yeah, so that's.
That's it.
That's what I, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Want to wrap it up?
Yeah.
Can I say?
Absolutely. So we need a motion to just, yeah, we could just defer, defer this item to the next meeting. A motion to defer, and then, yeah.
I'll, I'll make the motion to defer then. Second, all in favor? We have a forum, it's done.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Again, thank you all for coming. This is, this is great, I appreciate it. I think someone did say they wish there were more people here, and we all wish there were more people here.
It was not advertised. It was not advertised. It was not.
It's on, it's on website.
Okay, there you go. That, that's not advertising. That is not advertising. It was on Community Here and Now, and it was also on Community Alliance. Those are the only two places that we knew was available. That's why I'm here. And I blasted it on my Facebook page. That's why a couple of people were here.
Okay.
So.
I'll do a better job.
Look into advertising the next, I mean, you may have more people here, Rico. And I think there's a law that you're supposed to advertise this stuff.
So eventually, yeah.
There's no signage out here on this store that I'll do in either of them.
It's on a sign.
There are no signs out here, I took a photograph. There are no signs.
On the sign?
On the sign, on the, on the building, there's, anyway, it just needs to be advertised a little bit better. The Post and Courier, Higgins County Courier, whatever the name of it is, easily progress, social media, there are many ways to advertise.
Did you look on Easy Progress?
Pardon?
Did you look on Easy Progress?
Easy Progress. I have not, but I will tomorrow.
It was, it was previous.
Wasn't there a week ago, or this, or like last, last Wednesdays?
Probably last Wednesday, yeah.
Okay.
Week before, maybe the week before.
And, and as a note to that, too.
I'll do a better job, I'm sorry.
If, if we have not only pre-established dates, but alternate maybe what day do we end up doing it, where it's like not always on a Tuesday or always on a Monday, in these kind of meetings could also help vary who could, who could arrive in, in the event some people have conflicts and they want to address something down the road.
Okay.